Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Number two, Miles Two LLC, as there are only going to be six members to use variance and we would like the opportunity to have the full seven members. And again, I understand people's lives getting, you know, people have lives, you guys are volunteering. I just want to point out this would have been the thirteenth or fourteenth hearing. We've never carried it that I can recall because of something that we weren't ready. We've always been here. We either waited to the end of the night or there weren't seven members. I would just ask that we take that into consideration when we get whatever dates available, we try and be at the head of the of the hearing.
Yeah. So quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, and respectfully, based on that, and my recollection is that is correct, I would recommend carrying and we can then work on the order of the agenda. But I would recommend carrying this to the November second date.
Excellent. November sixth?
Well, good November second?
Yes. All right. So Mr. Chairman, members of the public, ladies, everyone, sorry, I mumbled through that one. Miles Two LLC preliminary final site plan eight thirty-three with the use variance thirty-three sixty. That matter is being carried to the November second, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Without the requirement for the notice, the applicant waives time through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Members of the public here on that application are free to leave. The matter will be heard November second.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, with regards to number three, Carolina Holdings, it was up for reconsideration. I got an email of, it was a holiday, right before the holiday, I didn't see it, that the, one of my witnesses was going in for emergency surgery today and so they, well, yesterday, so obviously they're not available to give testimony. So I would just ask for a new date.
So again, for that and the fact that quite frankly, you would need seven members for that as well. Plus, I think there was an internal mix-up with proffering the transcripts. Just put it out that way. So there's a bunch of reasons. Respectfully, again, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this has been sitting. I think it's something that has to be addressed for a number of reasons. I would recommend moving this to the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
And that's fine. I'm here anyway. So I appreciate that and gives you a little more time in case the witness.
Well, it gives, and it gives an opportunity for people to read the transcript. So there's really not a time requirement per se. This is a request for reconsideration, but you did notice this at first, right? Yes. Not yet. So members of the public who were notified and others who were here regarding this application number three, use variance thirty-three sixty-two and and the request for reconsideration. This matter is being carried to the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two meeting without the requirement of further notice. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Mr. Pfeffer, we, I understand we have the transcript you sent out about a month ago. Do you have all of the exhibits that are necessary?
Yes. What I will also do is, and I spoke to Mr. Gertner previously once about this, send a packet in, a full packet, so you have it all in front of you at the time of the meeting.
Good. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, if you could recognize Mr. Alferi as well.
Well, Mr. Alferi.
He's regarding application number five.
We saw your son last time, Mr. Pfeffer.
I know, I know. And he almost came tonight. I, we, we requested that number five be carried early in the day because I had a scheduling issue with another hearing in Marlboro that got resolved about four o'clock or so today, and that's why I'm here. But with only six members and this is a deviance, we would have carried either way.
Mr. Chairman, just again, making some recommendations and looking at the schedules. Is there an issue with anyone moving this to the meeting of November thirtieth, the special meeting on the thirtieth?
Don't we have a lot of time left?
There's two.
Only two?
Yeah, everyone's saying it should be fine. So our professionals, so members of, you will have to notice for that meeting.
Well, wait, before you do that.
No, well, we may not give it to him because.
I, I have on my calendar leaving early and then I have that I'm off on Thursday and Friday, which means I'm going somewhere.
So you know what? That and the fact that you would have to notice because it's a special meeting.
Can we go to the December?
To the December second, seventh, December seventh meeting. So members of the public, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, application number five for this evening. Do Free Street, Polina, Use variance thirty-four oh two. That matter is being carried to the December seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Without the requirement of further notice, the applicant waives time through December thirty-one, two thousand.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. One other announcement, actually two. Mr. Chairman, it was recommended by our board engineer, both professionals. I have no objection to this recommendation. That when we come out of executive session, which we have to go into, that application number four, we heard first. The day I understand will go and it's, it's a, it's a more direct issue. It's a construction of an underside whose eyes lie. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I know we had talked about the need of an executive session. So I'd ask somebody just to confirm the motion as I read the resolution, whereas the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides, excuse me, that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public, certain matters relating to the item or items authorized by NGS A ten colon four. Those matters in this regard involve current pending and potential litigation matters and related attorney-client privileged issues now therefore being resolved by the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment to authorize an executive session.
I need a motion for an executive session?
Motion.
A motion, a second.
So members of the public, where are we? We going into another room? We should, I would hope to be back by seven fifty. Plus, I think there was an internal mix-up with proffering the transcripts. Just put it out that way, so there's a bu- bunch of reasons. Respectfully, again, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this has been sitting. I, I think it's something that has to be addressed. For a number of reasons, I would recommend moving this to the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
And that, that's fine, I'm here anyway, so I appreciate that, and gives you a little more time in case the witness.
Well, it gives, and it gives an opportunity for people to read the transcript.
Yes.
So, there's really not a time requirement per se, this is a request for reconsideration, but you did notice this at first, right?
Yes.
Not yet, so, members of the public who were no- notified and others who are here regarding this application number three, use variance thirty-three sixty-two and, and the request for reconsideration. This matter is being carried to the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two meeting without the requirement of further notice.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record. Mr. Pfeffer, we, I understand we have the transcript you sent out about a month ago, do you have all of the exhibits that are necessary?
Yes, what I will also do is, and I spoke to Mr. Gertner previously once about this, send a packet in, a full packet, so you have it all in front of you at the time of the meeting.
Good, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, if you could recognize Mr. Alferi as well?
Well, Mr. Alferi.
He's regarding application number five.
We saw your son last time, Mr.
I know, I know, and he almost came tonight. I, we, we requested that number five be carried early in the day because I had a scheduling issue with another hearing in Marlboro that got resolved about four o'clock or so today, and that's why I'm here. But with only six members, and this is a devariance, we would have carried either way.
Mr. Chairman, just again, making some recommendations and looking at the schedules. Is there an issue with anyone moving this to the meeting of November thirtieth? The special meeting on the thirtieth?
Don't we have a lot of them?
There's two.
Only two?
Yeah, and everyone's saying it should be fine. So our professionals, so members of uh, you will have to notice for that meeting, that this is a special meeting, so.
Before you do that.
No, well, we may not give it to him because.
I, I have on my calendar leaving early, and then I have that I'm off on Thursday and Friday, which means I'm going somewhere.
So, you know what? That and the fact that you would have to notice because it's a special meeting.
Can we go to December?
To the December second, seventh, December seventh meeting. So, members of the public, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, application number five for this evening. Do Free Street, Polina, Use Variance thirty-four oh two. That matter is being carried to the December seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Without the requirement of further notice, the applicant waives time through December thirty-one, two thousand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. One other announcement, actually two. Mr. Chairman, it was recommended by our board engineer, both professionals, I have no objection to this recommendation. That when we come out of executive session, which we have to go into, that application number four, we heard first. They, I, I understand will go, and it's, it's a, it's a more direct issue. It's a construction of an underside whose eyes lie. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I know we had talked about the need of an executive session. So I'd ask somebody just to confirm the motion as I read the resolution, whereas the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides, excuse me, that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the Township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters relating to the item or items authorized by NGSA ten colon four. Those matters in this regard involve current pending and potential litigation matters and related attorney-client privileged issues now therefore being resolved by the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment to authorize an executive session.
I need a motion for an executive session?
Motion for executive session.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi. All right, so, members of the public, where are we, we going into another room? We should I would hope to be back by seven fifty. All right, you know what, let's, before you.
Motion to come out of section.
All in favor?
I.
Through the chair, excuse me, through the chair, I should have brought this up earlier because we have no acting secretary for the secretary, we need to get. Acting, acting secretary for plans to be signed and resolutions to be signed.
Yeah, my Mr. Ricardi.
What do I gotta do?
Make it, somebody needs to please make a motion to authorize Mr. Ricardi to, to, to sign the resolution.
We got a motion to second.
All in favor? We'll get there. As you guys are running, if the, our professionals could raise their right hand, do each of you silently swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments, excuse me, you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
I do. Starting with Mr. Hill.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Jeffrey Papporo, Zoning Officer.
Mr. McFarlane, thank you for raising your right hand. You silently swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. For the record, Graham McFarlane, Professional Engineer, Professional Planner with PDS, previously testified before this board on many occasions, offering testimony tonight for both engineering and planning issues. Thank you. Paul, I do have something to point out here, or like do size so they can follow along a little bit easier. Yeah. Mr. Mirabelli is handing out just copies of the exhibits that we have for the application tonight. You can see up on the, up on the screen, Anthony already put up A1, which is an aerial map showing the subject property. Property is known as Block 2506 Lot 21. It's on Indiero Road. Anthony, maybe just pan out just a little bit. For me, just pan out a little bit so I can see a little more of the, of the aerial. Thank you. Again, you can see the, you can see the subject, subject lot highlighted, highlighted in green. The existing lot is about nineteen thousand square feet in land area. Property is within the R20 zone. The existing right-of-way in front of the street does not meet municipal standards, so we are proposing to dedicate additional right-of-way to the municipality, so there is a fifteen-foot dedication to provide right-of-way in accordance with ordinance standards. So the resulting lot area, area becomes seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. So about two thousand square feet dedication is proposed in accordance with, with this application. The existing roadway is, is improved. It is not fully improved to municipal standards. The pavement width does not meet municipal standards. The road does not have curb or sidewalk on the, on the east side, which the subject property is on. Across the street, there is some sidewalk. There are, I think it's about four or five lots on the opposite side of the street that do have sidewalks. You can kind of, you can kind of, I'm sorry, have curb. You can kind of see them on the aerial here, that a string of these lots do have existing curb, but no, no sidewalk. On the east side of the road here, there was no curb from Fish Road out to, out to West Commodore. This, the ordinance in this town requires the developer to do one of, one of two things, either to provide the curb and sidewalk, or to contribute to the pedestrian safety fund. Our, our opinion is that it's more sensible to make the contribution to the pedestrian safety fund. For an application such as this, I don't see any true benefit to providing curb and sidewalk here, where it's not going to be connected to any other curb or sidewalk. And all the, the adjoining lots are developed, you can see again on, on the aerial, the adjoining lot to the north and the adjoining lot to the south. They do have single-family homes on them, so I don't believe there's any, any true benefit in having this applicant construct that, that curb and sidewalk. To the merits of the, of the application, Anthony, maybe go to, go to A2 for me next. So what we have, A2 is the variance plan that was submitted in, in support of the application. It's the same plan that the board was provided with. This shows the, the footprint of the proposed home, shows the, shows the subject lot, it shows the required building setback lines. It shows that the home is proposed to be built in accordance with the, the setback requirements of the R20 zone. So the only relief that's being solved with this application are the two items which, which are hardships to this application, are the size of the subject property and the, and the lot depth. Within this, within this R20 zone, the required lot depth is two hundred feet. This, the, the whole string of lots along Indiero Road are generally either, either a hundred and thirty or a hundred and fifteen feet. So that's definitely the, the development pattern in this area, that those lots have, all those lots have, have insufficient lot, lot depth. Our proposal is to build a, a four-bedroom home, about two thousand square feet of living area with a one-car garage, and of course, off-street parking will be provided in accordance with RSI's requirements, which for a four-bedroom home would dictate we provide a minimum of three parking spaces, and this plan shows that those will, will easily be provided. There is, we do not have a public well nor public sewer available, so the lot would be served by well and by, and by septic. And I believe that either, either my client or Mr. Mirabelli did send buy-sell letters to adjoining property owners. I think we only got one, one response, is that correct?
That's correct.
I believe we only got one response back, and which property was that? Which lot was that, Paul? That was a response from Lot Number 21. Well, 21 is the subject. No, response from Lot Number. I don't know who that's from. Do you know who that's from? Do you know which lot she is? Lot 20, the adjoining property owner on Lot 20, did not express any interest in, in either buying nor selling any part of, any part of their property or requiring any part of this property to make it more performable. Lot 20 is, Lot 20 is actually undersized itself. It's only nine thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Yes, there was a house on Lot 20. Lot 20 is to the, to the right of, as you look at the, as you look at the block plan, Lot 22 would be, would be to the left. So again, that was the only response that our client got back from buy-sell letters, and they did not express any interest in buying or selling or. Making any concessions. And Anthony, if you can just flip through to, to the architectural plans for me, just show those very, very quick. Next, you'll see A3, which is the, the floor plans of, of the home. It shows a, it shows an unfinished basement, first floor and second floor. As I said, the, the living space is about two thousand square feet. One-car garage is proposed with, with four bedrooms proposed on the, on the second floor. And then Anthony, just go to the last exhibit, which is elevations. So here you have elevations of the proposed house, just showing the front, rear, and the side elevations, just showing generally a colonial-style home in character with the housing in the neighborhood. Again, a house of modest size, being proposed well within all bulk standards of the ordinance, with the exception of the two that we cannot control, which are the area and the lot depth. Thank you.
Yes, through the chair, what is existing on the lot? Kind of struggling to say that.
The lot is, the lot is vacant right now.
So is there like a small shed or something in the back?
I believe there's a, there's some sort of trailer on the property. I'm not sure if it's owned by, by, by my client or by an adjoining property owner, but that would be removed in connection with this application. Lot 20 is a, I believe it's, it's a two-story home, a little bit smaller than, than this particular home. I don't have the exact number with me tonight.
Yes. I guess this is a question from Mr. Mirabelli, if I may, because it's more of a technical type of issue. Is there common ownership here between this applicant and the adjoining property owners?
I don't believe so.
Because this lot is non-conforming. I wonder if we have a merger issue here.
No, there was, as far as I know, there's no.
Can you use some, can you use the mic?
As far as I know, there's, there's no adjoining owner that had common ownership at, at any point in time that I'm aware of.
The only reason I ask is because on the application for the zoning permit. Ronco Developers list this mailing address as 137 Susan Drive, and the adjoining property owners are also at 137 Susan Drive.
Yep. Now, I think, to Mr. Hurley's point, if you look at the tax records that were printed out as part of the application. Lot 20 care of C. Wilson, 137 Susan Drive, and Lot 21 Cynthia Wilson, Lakeland, Florida. So I was going to ask the same point, the, the same name comes up on both of those lots.
But the same address though, too.
Correct.
So it just seemed to me, there's a possibility here of common ownership in that chain of title, and if there is common ownership, we may have a merger issue here, which could be a problem.
I'm going to have my client, why don't we swear him in, because he's going to give us some testimony.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. You silently swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You can use actually the lectern, it's easier. And then Mr. Mirabelli, yeah. Can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your relationship to the applicant and the owner of Lot 21?
Ron Koenig. I'm the President of Ronco Developers, Inc., and I own Lot 21. That's being presented tonight.
Are you familiar that there's any common ownership? Can you explain?
Can, can you explain what the, the question is, that looks, appears, at least from the tax map, that it might be owned by the same person?
I have no common ownership. There's Lot Number 19 and 20 is in care of C. is in care of C. Wilson. Um, that's a common ownership. Uh, the one for the one thirty-seven Susan Drive. Uh, the lot that I own, it's P.O. Box eight, Manalapan, New Jersey. I have no common ownership with Wilson. Um, it appears that this is in care of, according to the tax records, which is lot nineteen and twenty is the one you're referring to. We're lot twenty-one.
When did you purchase the lot?
I purchased the lot about two years ago, year and a half, two years ago.
You did a title search back then?
Uh, we did. And there's no common ownership.
No.
No, just on lot nineteen and twenty, I have a copy of the tax records if anyone wants to see it.
It's ju, it's just curious that on your variance plot plan, it shows the adjoining property owners as having the same address as you put on your application.
I mean, do you want this, this is the tax?
Well, let me, no, I'll ask, ask the question directly. We're looking at the certificate for zoning permit. Can you please explain why? And it's your signature, Ronco Developers, Inc.
That's me.
One thirty-seven, huh?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ronco is me, yes.
One thirty-seven Susan Drive, Jackson, New Jersey.
I never had, I never wrote one thirty-seven Susan Drive, so.
Do you think that's a mistake?
Absolutely. I, I've, don't even know one thirty-seven Susan Drive. It's nineteen and twenty is one thirty-seven Susan Drive, not lot twenty-one, so.
Just so the record is clear for whatever it's worth, uh, this is part of the app, the application. Um, but thank.
I don't know where that came from. I, it's not my.
I know what you just said, so that's why I'm doing this, pulling it out of the application.
I will note, I will note on all the other documents that the mailing address to the corporation is someplace in Manalapan or something.
That's correct. That's correct. And the deed also is in Manalapan.
So, and I know members are talking about this.
So we're, we're, we're looking at the, uh, uh, certificate for the zoning per, at the mailing address. Does say one thirty-seven Susan Drive in, in, uh, Jackson, New Jersey. Uh, Mr. Uh, Koenig says he, he, he did not type that in. He, he's not sure where that came. What, what's the mailing address in fact, though, for Ronco Developers, Ron?
It is P.O. Box eight, Manalapan, New Jersey.
Does your office, does your office for the corporation have a physical address location?
The address of the corporation is the P.O. Box.
I know that. Is there a physical place? I mean, P.O. Box is a P.O. Box.
Oh, sure. I mean, my home address is also Manalapan.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's an issue, crap, Ed, of the, of the?
We, we can provide you with the title search if that would be of some assistance and a copy of the deed.
I think that would be of assistance, but to the chairman's question, it's an issue of, and I'm not using the term pejoratively. It's an issue of fact and of law of, of credible evidence is presented to the app, uh, presented to the board related to the question. The applicants indicated on the road that he didn't, that, uh, he didn't type that in, though he did sign it. Um, but the balance of the application reflects that Ronco Developers is at this post office box in Manal.
Okay.
I would say.
All right. So what are you going to do with this piece of product? Are you going to develop it, sell it? Tell us. Do you live there?
Uh, develop it.
You're going to develop it?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Now, would you be able to put a sidewalk in if we request that?
Absolutely.
I'll open it up to the public and other. All right, this big board against the application, please be followed.
Sir, thank you for approaching. If you kindly raise your right hand. Sorry, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Michael A. Herencheck, five twenty in Dario Road. Uh, my block is twenty-five oh seven lot fifty-one.
Okay, tell us.
Uh, against. Okay, so we, uh, y'all started talking about the sidewalks and that there's no sidewalks on the street at all, so. To put a sidewalk in front of that property is kind of pointless. Um, storm drains would be helpful. We have no storm drains at all on the street. So that's, that's the street that's flooding in that area and that. So that would be something to take into consideration. Um, how many bathrooms are going to be in this home? Two and a half? Yeah. So you're going to need a pretty good sized septic for that.
Wait, hang on. So sir, if you're, since you seem like the most able to answer the questions, can, can you pull up a chair and, uh, because you're allowed to cross-examine like you're doing. Come up, sir. Bring a, bring a chair.
I'm sure it was. I don't think it's going to take that long, but.
Well, no.
It's getting late, you know?
We have to make, and I appreciate everyone's understanding. We have to make a, we have an obligation to make a record. So it's the best way to do it.
Okay. So why I asked about the bathrooms is for a septic, uh, which brings up kind of an issue for you. I'm not sure if you'd realize this, but, um, if you could kind of blow that up a little bit for us, that we can zoom in on the, the lot that we're looking to build. Beautiful. So, and this might bring some light to your title issues. I believe that the lot next door, which is twenty, yeah, so, okay, there you go. The septic for that property is on twenty-one or part of it. And the area where that septic is, is right where you're proposing to put your leach field. So that ain't going to work. You're going to have to take a look at that. The other issue I see on the, the plans for your building here is where you want to put your well. And that is really close to Ann Moore's leach field. I think you probably would want to take that into consideration as well. Um, the lot's undersized. We know that. Uh, the placement of your driveway, where that's going to lay out, it kind of appears to me it's going to wind up in line with the Debus residence driveway, which is lot fifty-two. You're real close to meeting those two driveways together. And not to mention, his master bedroom is right in the front by that driveway. So your traffic coming in and out of your driveway is going to be right in this, right in space at night or in the morning. What's the timeline on this, on the, um, the completion of the project? In other words, how long are you going to take to do this? Um, what secures us in this economy that you're going to continue to build and not run out of money? And then we've got to stare at a blown up lot and possibly a half-built house. I know this is a lot I'm throwing at you, but these are concerns of the neighbors. Um, is there somebody living right now on lot, on, on lot twenty? I do believe that this is, that's somebody renting here. I believe their first name is Joe. Who is Joe? Evans, Joe Evans. Yeah. He's, uh, I believe renting. Yeah.
Sir, you pointed out that we said that for lot twenty was actually on lot twenty-one.
I do believe it is. Or it's right on the property line. So at some point, those properties, I believe all three of them were one property and they got subdivided at some point. That's the information that I heard.
So for the chair, for the chair, if I may, lots nineteen and twenty, which are both south of this parcel are, are under common ownership. This parcel twenty-one was being, was likely part of the same, at least maybe the same estate at some point. Because it's obvious that the people living on twenty-one are benefiting from using lot twenty, I'm sorry, living on twenty have been benefiting over the years from utilizing lot twenty-one. Now, what I mean by that is there are storage containers on the property or a storage container. There are fencing that are, that are common to this lot to the south. So even though they were individual lots, it looks like they were the owner of lot twenty was using twenty-one to their benefit, likely because they owned it at one point. So as far as where the septic is for lot twenty, I agree. That's very important. We need to know that. If that septic system is on lot uh, twenty-one, then that's going to be a problem. That, that's an issue for lot twenty and this applicant at this point. Uh, same thing with the well. Uh, if that location. Uh, with regards to the septic system on undersized lots, we always, we always recommend to the board that you consider an alternative treatment unit be installed. That helps further dilute the nitrates from a septic system and protect the wells in the area and so on. It's what the Pyland's uses. Uh, so it's a good model to use in this area. It's a pre-treatment device that's installed on the septic. It's better than what everybody else on that road has there out there now. So, but we recommend them on undersized lots for these homes as well. It's a four-bedroom septic system. That's, septic systems are based on the number of bedrooms, not bathrooms. So it's a four-bedroom system. It's not going to be a large system. It's pretty typical for this area. Uh, if you own a four-bedroom home on this street, then the septic, and it is, it's, it'll be consistent with what you have currently.
There's, there's not too many four-bedroom homes. I don't believe.
Understood, understood, but it's not out of.
I'm glad you brought that up. It was another point of mine.
It's not out of character for Jack, for Jackson to have a four-bedroom home. Um.
But on our particular street, there's not many, there's what? There's three by, the three?
Understood, under, understood. That's okay. That's understood. Um, but no, there's, but those are the points I wanted to bring out. Um, and then Graham, with respect to the October fourteenth letter that we wrote, any issues with that? Anything in there? Okay, tha, thank you.
He'll agree to put that kind of system in.
He, he would agree to put that kind of system in as part of a septic.
Uh, one more thing. Uh, you guys mentioned about, uh, sending out, uh, letters to property owners. The letters that we received were just a notification of this meeting. Um, Ann Moore was the only one that actually she received a buy-sell, uh, in, inquiry letter, and she did respond to it. Um, but I guess you guys didn't, didn't recognize it.
Well, no, no, he's asking a different question.
A sell letter is only issued to those of adjacent properties.
Right.
The purpose of that is to be able to offer, um, somebody to sell some of their property to make this one more conforming or buy this parcel as if the variances are granted at market value.
Right, and that would be lot twenty-two and more. She was issued a buy-sell letter and did respond to it. But that's, I'll let Anthony deal with that. Um, I, I think I'm, uh, pretty much done here. Uh, hopefully I've, uh, brought up a, a few good points taken into consideration. Um, flooding. Yeah, I mean, the, the whole street has an issue every time it rains. Um, our side floods. Uh, it stays in the street because our side has curbing. I'm on, I'm, uh, I guess that's fifty-one and you know, it stays in the street, but on, on their side, the water comes right up the properties. So, and it all runs down towards fish. And there's really no, no drainage down there either. You know, we have an issue with water on that street. So sidewalk ain't going to do us no good. You know, but a storm drain would, you know, that would help us out. But the road just got recently paved and you're going to tear up that pavement with storm drains in, so that's not cost-effective. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, sure. H E R E N C H A K. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, thank you for approaching. Kindly, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Ann Moore, M O O R B, five twenty-one Indiero Road.
Thank you.
Tell us what your feelings are. I know you had to express yourself.
Yeah, I just.
Couldn't do, that's why I forgot.
They're coming very close to my property and I know they want a piece of my property, which I already said no. Uh, I don't want to give out that prop, that property. Um, there's all trees between where that green line is, there's all trees there, but my leach field is right there, right? Past that green line and my septic tank is right there.
You mean it's on his property?
No, on my property, but it's close to, I don't know how far away it should be, but how close is the house is going to be to my property?
Because there's twenty. Whoa, 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 excuse me. Let's put it on the record as where is it going to be? And if you, Mr. McFarlane, can you answer?
Yes, I believe, um, the, uh, the, the witness, uh, lives on lot twenty-two, which is north of the, of the subject. Uh, the home will be set forty-three feet from that common property line. The required side yard setback is fifteen feet and this home was proposed forty-three feet from that property line. No, there, there are, there are standards, uh, for, for well and septic separation that have to be complied with for the application. There are requirements for separation from well to septic and septic to septic that get reviewed and approved by Ocean County Health Department.
Okay, but there's a lot of trees in between me and them. And I don't want them damaged. And I want assurance that they won't be touched or damaged.
Trees on their property, on your property?
Correct. Because mistakes can be made. And there's beautiful trees there, beautiful. And I don't want them touched on my property.
I would, Mr. McFarlane, you can talk about the engineering of and the surveying of the property.
We're, we're not proposing to take down any trees on your property. That, that's for sure.
Well, accidents do happen.
And the, uh, the plan that we submitted does show, uh, that we'll be clearing about twenty feet from, from the house in that direction. So another twenty feet of existing vegetation is proposed to, to remain based upon the, the variance plan, the way we have it prepared.
But not on my property.
Correct.
That's why.
Nothing on your property will be impacted.
I hope so. Because accidents do happen. I've seen it happen. Thank you.
Sir, thank you for approaching and raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address?
My name is Glenn Devust, I live at five sixteen Indario Road.
Can you spell your last name?
D E V U Y S T. And I'm against this variance in that it's not a septic, it's not a leach field. It's an old-style uh, zest, because that house was built years ago and it is definitely over on that property. If they can walk out there, you can see it's about thirty feet into that property. Now, what are they going to do when he puts his in? What's going to happen to that house's sewer system? Where are they going to put it? Now, that whole lot was owned by the Greens at one time, all three lots. The guy that lives there now, Joe Evans, is a relative of the people that owned that property and the other property. It's all owned by family. So that's why he was able to stay there. And I'm just saying that, that you've got an existing septic system on the ground. What are you going to do when he goes to put his in?
So Evan, do you have an answer?
Yeah, well, the, 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 the short answer there is that lot twenty, if their septic system is on lot twenty-one, then the, something's going to have to be done to, for lot twenty to, for a new septic system. So it's not necessarily. So it's not necessarily lot twenty's obligation to do that, it would be this applicant's obligation if it's on their property to do something. Would you agree? Not necessarily. Well, because, because, because of all the common ownership over the years, if lot twenty's septic system is on your client's property, right? And your septic you're, you're going, I think you're going to want to, before you answer that, you should, you should research it a little bit more. Please. I, I agree that it needs, that it needs research, but you, you asked me a question. It, it depends how that system, that supposed system got there, whether it was done properly or not, or you know, there could be a lot of history to it that we're not aware of as we sit here tonight.
Well, that house has been on that street before any other houses were built, when that street was a dirt road. And the Evans, the Greens owned it. So that system was put in probably before you and anybody else lived in this town. That's how long it's been there. Because that, that house, the original owners of the, across the street and everything, they sold all the property where our houses are now. So I'm just saying, they put the septic system in when they owned the property, but now everybody's fighting over who owns what.
So Graham, if there's an issue with a septic system being on, for someone else's property being on your client's property, would it be a reasonable condition to board that you need to get the septic system design and approval from the Ocean County Health Department as a condition of this approval prior to any work on the lot being performed? Yes.
Right. Well, I, I guess the, the question really for the board to ponder is, you know, Mr. Mirabelli offered as a condition of approval to provide the title work and the history of the deed. Hearing some of the objectors, hearing more than one person articulate the fact that this lot twenty somehow has benefited from the use of lot twenty-one. The question for the board may be to ask to look at that title work to satisfy itself regarding common ownership prior to rendering a determination.
You have to speak into the mic, no. Sorry.
Is there squatters rights for the septic to be on lot twenty-one being that it's there for probably fifty years minimum?
Well, so I wouldn't
That type of septic tank that he's saying it is.
Well, understand that the, the folks that have the authority over those systems are the Ocean County Health Department. No, no, no. If they go down the Ocean County Health Department and Mr. McFarlane hands them this plan and they pull up the plan next door, say, well, that's in between this applicant and the person next door, this board had nothing to do with it other than to say he can't start work on this property until this applicant shows up with a valid Ocean County Health Department approval for a septic system design on this lot.
I, I think what he says, you know, it's possible adverse possession claim here.
Yes, and that, that's where I was
That's exactly what I'm asking.
And that's where I was going with Graham and asking, so my opinion here is, I, I think the location of the septic system for lot twenty definitely needs to be researched and identified on this plan. And I would recommend you do it before you take any action on this application. Second thing I'm going to, and the second reason I say that is also with the potential for common ownership of the title throughout the years, I think that should be vetted out as well, because if there isn't a right for adverse possession here as a result, then this design will have to change. So I think that does need to be vetted out, I think what you might be, if this design has to change as a result of that existing septic system being on your lot, obviously your septic's going to have to move, your well's going to have to move and so on. So I think, I think we need to get that vetted out before you make any decision tonight, that's my, that's my recommendation to you.
Can I say one more thing? Okay, if we have zoning for twenty thousand square feet, that's what the criteria is. Why are we building on something that's smaller?
So, so the thirty thousand foot answer to that question, and I'd leave it to Mr. Mirabelli to make the argument, is, is in underlot, undersized lot cases in general, municipality and represented in this particular case by the Board of Adjustment, has to be careful not to zone a piece of property into annulity and to create what they call a regulatory taking. Because property has value. So that they have a right to seek the particular variance that they're asking for, but they have to make their proofs. So you can't just say, because it's R twenty and because this lot is undersized, there's no way you can build, because if you say that, that directly, you open the door up where what is commonly referred to as a regulatory taking, and then they could sue the town saying, hey, you're not letting us build, you got to pay us for this lot.
Yeah, they, they have to show that they have a hardship. So at some point in time, this lot was created, it would have been created for me or for you.
Well, can I ask that question? He's a developer, he knows that the lot is undersized, why buy an undersized lot to build on that you know you're going to have to go through all this to do it?
Well, that's
That's, that's his business choice.
Pardon me, that's his own risk.
Right.
But, but, excuse me, but I'll answer the question, but once the entity is an owner, that entity becomes a person also under the law and they have the same rights as to make their case as you do to object.
Okay, and there are two, there are two boards, land use boards in town, one's the planning board, this one's the zoning. All the applicants that come in front of this board, the zoning board, there's a reason why they're coming here, undersized, they're, they're they're asking to do something that isn't necessarily a hundred percent per code, then they need variance relief from it. Planning board is by right plans. If this was, if this was not an undersized lot, they probably would have more likely, they would likely already have their zoning permit now and be building on it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We've done one test pit so far. The water was about four and a half, five feet deep and we do have to do it, we do have to do additional test pits for the septic design as well. In our letter, we indicated that we didn't see any test pit information supplied, if they performed one, that's fine. But we would need to see that and we would have, we would, we would verify that the basement elevations and the septic system is designed to, to incorporate that wherever the seasonal high groundwater is. It doesn't surprise me that water is four to five feet below this, below the surface in this area, it does not surprise me at all.
So if, if I may, that might have a lot to do with the flooding in the area. And also depending on where on the property you took that torrent test, you may
Well, we, we did it in the middle, in the middle of the property and you heard the residents talk about the, you know, supposed flooding or the, the lack of drainage. They talked about lack of drainage collection on, on the roadway and how the water runs down the street down, down to Fish Road. And that is not this applicant's responsibility to, to take care of that existing condition far beyond his, his responsibilities. So just so that's
Completely understood, that's, wouldn't be his responsibility, that's the township's or whoever, but so depending on where you took that test, it could be her septic or the, on lot twenty with the flooding on the street, which would really determine where the water is. If you move further north and take a test, you should mark on the plan where you're taking your test and you might want to get the water, the soil tested because of the septic that's maybe on that property and her septic on the other side, you may want to get the soil tested before you drill a well.
Well, we, we have to go through the, the, the procedures outlined by the, by both the state and Ocean County Health Department for, you know, for the well permanent and for the septic permanent. So there are protocols in place to make sure that those are going to function properly.
Okay, thank you.
So you have your homework to do. All right, man.
Mr. Chairman, before she does, ma'am, excuse me, one minute, one question. Mr. Mirabelli, Mr. McFarlane, I know, Mr. McFarlane, you didn't do the survey, but do either of you or Mr. Conan, do you happen to have a copy of the deed with you?
Mr. Conan does not, I asked him before if he had it, he doesn't have it with him tonight. I'll certainly get that as part of the title search.
Thank you for raising your right hand, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
My full name is Elizabeth LaRosa, L A R O Z A. I live at four ninety-nine Enduro Road, which is right on the corner of West Fish and Enduro. I've been there since two thousand thirteen, I want to voice my objection. I don't know if anybody has driven down this particular street that we're talking about this evening. I would have to say it is not your typical street that everybody is talking about. It is narrow, it is beautiful, it has trees, it has lovely families. No sidewalks, which is fine, we have a lot of walkers, dog walkers and everything. Curbs, no. I live on the flooded area and it's not so-called, it is and does flood, so it's not so-called. Thirteen years, I've got four septic or systems in my house that is on a knoll and it's used quite often. Wetlands are also behind my house, I don't know if that has been taken into effect either. I can't see. But it is, it's, it's a small street and to get more driveways on there and I didn't understand about the parking, if I could have that clarified, is there going to be on-street parking? Was that something that was part of what you were suggesting?
The development regulations require the applicant to provide off-street parking. So for a four-bedroom home, he has to provide three off-street parking spaces, so that'll be provided. To my knowledge, just, I, I don't believe there's any restriction to on-street parking on, on this street.
No.
So that would be available, just like it's available to every other resident.
Correct, so when winter comes, and again, it's a very small street, it's not a two-way street by any means, it's one and a half lane at the best. You have to kind of pull over, let the car pass and go. So clearing, snow removal, adding more to an already non-conforming lot, I would object to. Besides all this stuff, I want to thank you for looking into the title search, into the deed, those are things after talking with our neighbor Joe, who is only a renter, but it's part of his family, I know that there are issues with that, so I commend you and thank you for looking into that, that is something that needs to be addressed. So I just, you know, I thank you, taking everything into consideration. Drive down the street, it's really lovely, bring your dogs, walk your kids, just watch out for my dogs and all the other dogs. Thank you.
The existent, the existing cartway is twenty-two and a half feet wide. Twenty-two and a half feet. So this is, this is a township roadway, it's a semi-improved roadway, which means it doesn't be, it doesn't beat standards of a new road. If there's no park, if the town has not imposed any parking restrictions on it for, for on-street parking, that's, that's really up to, that's the town's responsibility to do that. If it's not wide enough, it's also the town's responsibility to, to widen it at some point if it needs to be. The applicant, the only, the only thing the applicant can do in this case is what they're doing and that's to grant the town additional right-of-way for future roadway improvements. It's not, it's not on the applicant to do any of those roadway improvements in this case. Well, no, you have the jurisdiction, you have the jurisdiction to ask them to make, to ver, to verify that they're providing sufficient off-street parking spaces, which has been their testimony. Right? So you can't restrict people parking within the public right-of-way on an existing street like this.
Right, if, if I may, I know the first gentleman had concerns over the driveway lining up with then across the street driveway. I believe that A two is wrong and that the driveway is going to be on the other side of the house, because if you look at the elevation on drawing A four, the driveway is on the right side of the house, not the left, so.
No, it's good, they're going to, they're going to be very close to each other, they're going to line up pretty close right across the street from each other.
What I'm saying is it's mirrored. The, the, the drawing on, if you look at A two, the driveway is on the left side of the house with the garage.
Correct.
The elevation on A four, it's on the other side of the house, they may be close, but they're not going to be that close.
So Oh, I see you're saying, you're, you're saying the elevation, the front elevation.
The elevation or the plot plan is wrong, one or the other.
Yeah, no, these, these architectural plans are not the same that were these are an older version of what was submitting, of what was submitted with the application.
So that's actually good segue, because I think the applicant heard as well, you know, it's their, ultimately their risk and their choice of the necessity for further information, but I remind the board and for the public's edification as well. And I'm just for the record, I'm reading from page six seventy-five, section thirty-one point six of Cox talking about the Dahlmeier case, which is a case relating to undersized lots. And I'm going to jump to the presumption and that in my opinion, this lot is sufficiently small to require the applicant to provide these detailed plans for the house and the history of the lot. Such that, and I'm, I'm reading and paraphrasing, such that also to ensure not only the health and safety of the applicants, but in fact that there is a desirable visual, visual environment and the value of the neighborhood and the neighboring properties is such that the plan meets with, with the general appearance of, of the neighborhood, that's out of Dahlmeier from, from Cox, so I think is part of, should the applicant heed the board request and supplement the record with the information required, it should be heated to provide additional information and to make sure, for instance, that the plot plan and the architectures line up and all these questions are asked. Additionally, it would appear based upon the evidence that I perceive has been granted thus far, that depending on the location of the existing septic, coupled with the potential of this, the subdivided lots being part of a previous mother lot that I think in this case is sufficient information for the board to request knowledge of where that existing, and I'm going to refer to it as a cesspool, because that's been the evidence thus far, testimony thus far, such that if there's an effect on design on this lot, the board has the right to review what effect that has.
Okay, any other resident here to come forward at this juncture? All right, so I'm going to close the public session next time, because they're going to be coming back with
Let's, so Mr. Chairman, they actually never articulated that they would, so let's give them a chance to.
We will provide
You have to speak into the mic.
We will provide information in the form of a title search and the deed. From what else I'm also hearing is that you want to see that he has an approved septic and, and well plan and will also investigate what the, the system that's on the adjoining lot, whether or not in fact is on the applicant's lot.
I was confused about approved septic system, I'm not sure what you were saying there, but what we ask, what we're asking you to do is investigate the locate, the type at location of septic system for the adjacent lot to make sure it's not on your property. If it is, then you're going to have to figure out how you either keep that there to the benefit of lot twenty and redesign your lot, right, Graham's shaking, you're shaking your head, okay. That's what we spoke about, I believe, that's what we need to address to come back before the board. Yes.
So.
Mr. Chairman? Just one further request, or let me expound on that. When you do the title search, would you ask the title company to give you the copies of the deeds? I want to make sure that there's no merger issue here, they generally go back sixty years. See if they can give us, we'd like, I would like to see, in order for me to vote on this application, I would like to see copies of those deeds to make sure there's no common ownership. I would like to see copies of those deeds to make sure there's no common ownership. Because I'm, now that the testimony came, came forth that the, the, the septic system or the leaching field, whatever it is, either way, I don't even know if there's a difference. Um, now that we know that it's on the adjoining property, it kind of makes me think also that there must have been common ownership here for that to occur. So I need to have that in my mind for me to make a decision. I need to have that resolved. Copy the deeds would, would help.
We'll provide that.
Thank you.
So this subject parcel is twenty-one, adjacent to that is twenty. And then further to the south is nineteen, and yes, there's a residential dwelling there as well. On the tax records, nineteen and twenty are, are the same owner. There appear to be similar ownership in the past with twenty-one with those as well. Uh, Lot twenty is definitely undersized and nineteen, I would suspect is also undersized as well. Yes.
As far as this existing septic from Lot twenty, there may be no record, being that it was one owner, there may be no record of it even being installed. Those systems typically have a life expectancy of up to thirty years. So it may have moved across the property a few times, if that house is the existing house. So you may have a hard time actually finding record that it exists, other than having a plumber snake it out and find out exactly where it lands. Well, good luck.
Is he planning a basement in this hall?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All of that, uh, we're, I suspect all of that's gonna be provided to us at the net prior to the next meeting.
Well, there's ways to mitigate the water with.
Yeah, so, so, and they have to prove their case though. So, um, Mr. Maribelli and Mr. McFarland, when what sort of timeframe do you perceive you need to provide this, the information?
I think we can do it in thirty days.
And updated architectials, just the.
Not a problem.
It's gonna be a very big hole, the size of the homes.
Well, don't, he's not made any conclusion yet, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, they, they, we read them the Dahlmeier decision. They, they know what they have to prove. Let's not move, let's hear. Hear, hear the testimony. All right, so, um, the either December seventh or the December twenty-first.
December twenty-first.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, ladies and gentlemen. Application number four this evening, Ronco Developers Variance Thirty-four Sixteen, that matters. We carry to the December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two meeting without the requirement of further notice. The applicant is waived time to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-two, you're right. Um, sorry, Dr. Dan. Other applications.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary G. Kobe, Alfieri and Jacobson, behalf of the applicant.
So, Mr. Alfieri, you, you, you know, particularly are used to the issues that sometimes are raised with six members?
We're prepared to proceed, um, as it relates to a vote. We'll see how things go. We only need a simple majority, which is still four members with only six, we understand. Uh, this, uh, for the board members who, who weren't here in the past, um, the new board, first of all, welcome.
They were all certified.
Yes, I heard, I understand. Thank you. Um, we received, uh, density variance approval in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I believe. Uh, that application was for sixteen lot, sixteen residential lot subdivision. The board ultimately approved it as a thirteen lot subdivision. It was a bifurcated application, which means we only received the variance relief. Um, and now we're here for the subdivision relief, subdivision approval. Um, the, when we were here last, um, uh, one of the neighbors who's present tonight told the board and Graham and I that, um, the applicant at the time no longer owned the property and sold it to somebody, which was the first time we heard that. So we, um, adjourned the application and, uh, found out that yes, the property was sold and the new applicant, um, is now the applicant. We, after that meeting, we sent the letter to the board amending the application. We submitted a new W nine and we submitted the necessary ownership disclosure forms, so that now the proper party's in place. Um, also, since the last meeting, uh, my client, who is not a developer, they're, they're, they want to build this subdivision for themselves and their friends and families. Um, they did buy it from a developer, um, met with at least the one neighbor who's present tonight and perhaps others. And, uh, listened to many of their concerns about the design of the project and we submitted a revised plan in an effort to provide additional buffering to the neighbors who, who would join the entrance road. Uh, Mr. McFarland will get into that momentarily. Um, so we're here tonight for the subdivision approval. And, um, we're gonna ask the Mr. McFarland, he actually was sworn in and qualified previously.
He was, so, but what we normally do here is thank for raising your hand. Do you sound swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
As indicated, you were previously sworn and you were accepted as an expert as both a planner and engineer, correct?
Correct.
Nothing's changed with your certification?
Uh, nothing other than I'm more experienced than last time I was here.
Uh, yeah, why don't you come up? Because I understand, come on. Let's raise your right hand again. Do you sound me swear affirm testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So the only, I, I, I should say, and that's fine that you did this, you have a jurisdictional question.
Yes, I, I am not a lawyer, so this is, the one time it was, it was, it was, uh, it was the, uh, the other thing that I, I can't remember.
Well, we don't have to worry about that other thing right now.
No, 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 I'm not.
But to be, I'm gonna presume that you want to present because jurisdiction, if the board should find that your argument is correct, that would divest jurisdiction and the board wouldn't have to hear the balance of the application.
Precisely, and that's, that's what I was under the impression.
That's what I figured. So what is the argument?
The argument is, uh, I, I had prepared a bunch. I crossed out a lot of them because I don't want to take up. There's nobody else behind us. There's nobody else behind us. From the beginning, we have not opposed this, uh, as this application. We supported the one acre. We supported the thirteen houses. We have no problem. We know it's going to happen. I've met the new owners. I, I, after the August meeting, I was in their office for three hours. We sat down. They were wonderful people. And as was alluded here, they're talking about building it for himself. So as they told me, we're not, if we were builders, you wouldn't be here, but we're your neighbors because we're going to move in. So during the original twenty twenty, when the, when the, uh, first of all, when I looked at the files, the land use app development form is to me, if, if this is, as was just stated, it's a bifurcated application. And a bifurcated application in my understanding is that the first thing you come in for is the variance for the use. And under the municipal land use law, the way it's written, it says that an, at, an applicant may elect to submit a separate application for the variance only. And that's what's happened here, even though the, the zoning board has designated this as major sub six fifty-two. It's not because if it's a true bifur- bifurcated application, by my estimation, if the state law is saying you come with a separate application first only for the variance.
They did that.
Which is timeout, which is, which is what, um, the, the, uh, the resolution does say. So now they came in exactly just because, just because I think what happened was, was since the application didn't have variance checked on it. When whoever's doing the work in the zoning office says, oh, this is a major sub preliminary final, so we're going to take the next number six fifty-two. And if, and so the bifurcated application process in, with my understanding is, is that, and I have it, give me one second to get to it. That is NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy-six B and its special powers. Developer may elect to submit a separate application requesting approval of the variance and a subsequent application for any required approval of a subdivision. Now those laws, that law and the township ordinance does not define separate or subsequent. So I went to the regular old dictionary. Separate means forming or viewing as a unit, a part of itself. In other words, different or distinct, whereas subsequent is happening or coming after something else. In other words, following. So what I am curious about is if this is truly a bifurcated application and the state law says you have two separate things. One is separate application for variance. The other is subsequent application for variance. The way that this is being handled, the township is getting ripped off in a, in a respect because if these folks haven't paid for the, uh, variance and the subdivision, there, there's different fees. When you check those.
So, so, but I guess I'm not, and, and Mr. Hill has a better handle because he carries these through. But certainly respectfully, my understanding that this parcel was subject to the first part of the bifurcating process where it, where the board granted a density variance to permit thirteen lots. This is the subsequent application. And Mr. Hill, can you add?
No, that's exactly it. The app, the applicant has submitted a variance application a couple of years ago and it was approved. That was the density variance application. That was step one.
Okay, density.
And then following that, after they received the density variance for thirteen residential homes, they are now proceeding with step two, which is the subdivision application. They're two distinct, different applications.
And then why are we working under the same number of major sub six five two right now?
It, it, that's just an internal record keeping thing.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I would expect when we look at agendas here, you see the parentheses. It says Joe Blow variance, this one minor, this one major. And with the bifurcated application, to me, it, it is very clear that you're not talking one in the same. You are getting, you are coming in with a separate application and you're getting the variance.
If I can.
Now that you've got it, timeout. Now that you've got it, now you have, according to this, the way I read it, you go back to the governing body and make a separate, a subsequent application.
And I am interrupting on purpose. First of all, there's no application to the governing body. Governing body is divested itself. There's no appeal to the governing body at unlike, uh, some zoning permits can be done separately as Mr. Hill said, and he's more, he is, uh, charged generally with completeness reviews. He's articulated internally that, um, uh, that the numbers, it's an internal follow-up number. You certainly respectfully were able to follow the history of the approvals of, and this separate application. So I would ask that unless there's anything further as to this argument, that if the argument is based on a misnumbering.
No, it's not based on.
Can I clarify? I'm going to clarify. When the application was originally submitted back in twenty twenty, it was for a very, it was for a density variance application and a subdivision application simultaneously. At that point, during the hearing process, the applicant amended their application to be, or bifurcated the application just to be for density only. So they punted the six fifty-two subdivision down the road later. They then, they then submitted the six fifty-two application. It's they've, the applicant has done what they are supposed to do and the town has processed the applications the way they've supposed to have. I don't know how else to explain it. I would really, I, I really think it's in your best interest to move on to your, to keep.
Oh, yeah. Well, I have, I have some exhibits here that I like to, that I would like to pass out.
Regarding this.
Yes, regarding, regarding this, regarding this file. It's only four pages. Uh, they're already, they're already marked.
The whole night. About the jurisdiction or other issues?
It is about all of these. It, this, this has the certificate for zoning, the application for land use, land development. It has, uh, a, that's a two-page thing. And then the last page, timeout, the let please, the last page is the resolution that was passed.
I think it's a better respectfully, I think it's a better use of the board's time that the applicant complete its testimony. The objector then have the ability to raise any and all objections because it appears based on what's already been testified to that, uh, the board continues to have jurisdiction over, over the application.
If I may, can I share with you, uh, chapter two forty-four of our land use, uh, has the definition in two twenty, two forty-four, six definitions. Application for development. It's the application form and all accompanying documents. For example, this twenty twenty, we were here, they got, they got the variance for the one. So now they're coming back with a design which is totally legal. They have ones, they have one acre and they can do what they want. And you had made it very clear that the resolution did not make the original design a condition. That's why they don't have to come back with it. Correct?
I'm not sure actually. So, but the resolution speaks for itself at this point.
Don't mind me. My mind's going.
I think we, I think we addressed, we addressed that before. We indicated when the applicant submitted a plan, it was a concept plan.
Exactly. Only to get the, only to get the three to one. And that's the concept plan. And that's why in my, in my interpretation, it says they elect to submit a separate application requesting approval of the variance and a subsequent.
Respectfully, a, and I think, Mr., your objection is noted. You'll have the opportunity to further articulate the objection after the completion of the application. But I, I would also say that, that the A reason, the, the applicant determined to bifurcate during the process was that the board itself granted a variance where less than that was originally sought. So the applicant had to come back with new plans, a new subdivision plan because they were granted less density than they originally proposed.
I wish.
Chairman, I would add, sir, you've been heard.
I have, I have one more thing, please.
Up to the chairman, but.
No, you'll have to say it. Let's continue. Let them proceed. Listen to what they have to say. You want to come back.
It would, thank you. It would have just taken one second.
And Mr. Chair, um, just because I'm not sure where this is going to wind up. Um, I have a copy of the cover letter from PDS dated March third of twenty twenty-one that include, that contains the entire, it's refers to the entire application package for the preliminary final major subdivision approval, which was filed subsequent to the bifurcation. Just to, again, not knowing where this will end up in the future. It gives the new disclosure statements. It gives the whole list of the reports, et cetera. So just so we have a complete record, can I give this to whomever so that we have it?
With your initial application for the, for the variance and preliminary final subdivision?
Correct.
So that explains why it has the same number. That's all.
Yeah, I agree. That's but I, fine. I just, um, all right. So let's, we probably spend way too much time on that point. Graham, um, Graham, you, um, you heard my intro- introduction. Um, for the new board members, can you just orient the board as to where this property is located? And I know you, you pre-submitted the various exhibits.
Yes, Anthony, if you could put up A four.
Do the board members want reduced versions of what we're going to put up there?
Yes, please. Always easier to flip. Identify.
Yeah. So what's up on the screen and what Mr. Alfieri is passing out is, uh, exhibit A four is, uh, the development plan with a revision date of September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. So this is the, uh, the latest plan submitted to the board, uh, mostly in response to feedback that we got from the gentleman who was just, just speaking, who had, uh, a meeting or two with my client and also had some email communication with, with, uh, with our client pointing out some of, uh, some of his concerns. So we did, um, you know, we tried to, uh, address his concerns and revise this plan to hopefully, uh, satisfy his, his comments, uh, as well as input that we've gotten from the board previously. Uh, for the members who are not here the, the whole time, uh, this property is located on Burke Road. I'm referring to A four. You see Burke Road to the right of the, uh, to right of the subject map. See, the adjoining street is Solomon Court, and that's where the, the gentleman who was just up, uh, resides. Uh, the proposal is to construct a single cul-de-sac stem road, uh, with thirteen, uh, houses consistent with the variance approval that was granted by the board previously. Uh, the, the changes that we've made to, uh, to this plan, quite simply, are really some, some clarifications just to make sure that, that the plan represents exactly what is, what is going to be proposed. One of the, um, largest items of discussion we've had, Anthony, if you could zoom in for me a little bit here on, uh, on, on this portion of, of the plan where the stem road is, uh, is, is coming in. You can see on the plan, we show our Seaver Court. You can see that there's sidewalk proposed on one side of the, of the street where we have detention basin and then lots for development for single-family homes. And on the opposite side, there's no sidewalk proposed. That would be the, be the north side. You can also see a, a tree line here shown that represents a limit of clearing that is, that is proposed. So that represents, uh, twenty feet of existing vegetation to be, um, to remain, to, to remain undisturbed. Uh, the balance of the area from that tree line over to the right of way would be, uh, cleared and graded and then replanted with, uh, with, with buffering. Uh, Anthony, maybe just go to A five for, for me next and I'll, we'll just go over that real quick while we're talking about that. Again, if you could just zoom in on that same piece we were, we were just focusing on for me. So A, A five is the, is the latest landscape plan, again, updated, uh, with that September twenty-eighth date. And you can see on, on this plan where we show, uh, again, focusing on the entrance to the project along the adjoining homes that have frontage on Solomon. You can see street trees proposed on both sides of the street. Then you can see some supplemental buffering proposed behind the line of street trees. And again, you can see, uh, twenty feet of natural vegetation to remain in that area. So we've done this to try to minimize any impacts to those adjoining properties. At the, at the prior hearings and through communication that we had, again, with the, with the adjoining owner, there were questions about, brought up about grading, about privacy, about, uh, disruption to the, uh, to the buffering or to the vegetation. So we've tried to take that all into account, uh, and, and again, have ended up with a, with a fifty-foot wide buffer. Uh, plus, you know, ten feet from the right of way line to the curb line. So the curb line is actually going to be sixty feet from the property. So that sixty feet will be occupied again with street trees, with buffering and with existing vegetation to remain. The prior plan, the prior, the prior plan that we submitted also did have fencing, um, along the property line. But that gentleman had said he didn't want the fencing there. So we've eliminated the fencing from the plan.
You want to go first?
My question is a legal reception of a legal one. So you're creating a, um, a conservation easement. Whose benefit, whose burdening is, there's going to be homeowners association regarding the, uh, retention basins. Are they also going to be charged?
Yes.
With the maintenance of the conservation.
Yes. As a condition of the use fat, the density approval, uh, we had agreed to have a homeowners association forum to maintain the basins. So that association will also maintain those easement areas that Mr. McFarland referred to.
Thank you.
Yes. And Anthony, if you can, uh, you can pan up for me to get up, up to this corner of the, uh, of the plan. Uh, yeah, I, I, I guess that's, that's good enough. Up a little more if you can, if you don't mind. If the, uh, the board recalls, there was also a lot of discussion at the, at the variance stage and that has continued through, uh, through this application during the subdivision regarding access to adjoining properties. I believe they're identified as lot, lot, lot twenty and lot thirty, which are, which are right over here, uh, along, uh, this, I'm going to say east, east property line. Uh, that lot, that lot does have a driveway that encroaches, uh, partially onto the subject property. So an easement is provided for that driveway to remain un- unencumbered. Uh, the plans also do show that uh, we, again, we have the fifty-foot buffer proposed along Seaver Court, again, along the, the houses on Solomon. That buffer does continue around, uh, around the site along this common property line going, going north. And then it also does continue along the, uh, top of the page as well. Uh, it does show a little more clearly on the, uh, on the handouts that you have in front of you than it's showing on that exhibit up on the screen right now.
And Graham.
If you look at exhibit A four, uh, the development plan, you can see those proposed buffers shaded. So I, I think they show a little more clear on that, that plan than they do on that uh, digital representation.
And Graham, one of the earlier versions of the application actually had the, the basin, which is at the intersection on the other side of the street.
Correct.
And the neighbors didn't want it there. So we shifted it to this location.
Correct.
To accommodate an earlier request.
Yes. Yeah. So we've, uh, we've made at least two, you know, two or three, uh, iterations and revisions of these plans to try to address concerns from these adjoining neighbors. Uh, I mean, my, my representation is I, I think we've done everything that, that they've asked for as we've, as we understand it. Uh, this, this plan is, uh, is in accordance with the, uh, resolution for the variance that was provided and uh, hopefully the board will, will act favorably on it tonight.
And okay, a couple of follow-up questions. The, um, the conditions that were contained in the, uh, the, the devariance resolution, particularly, we talked about the homeowners association. Um, but there was also a limitation on the number of bedrooms that, that would carry over, five-bedroom max would carry over to this application.
Yes. And, and with that, of course, the applicant would be obligated to provide, uh, at least three off-street parking spaces. Uh, and you can see by the proposed layout, uh, these lots are all at least one acre in size and there will be, uh, you know, more, more than the three parking spaces provided for, for each home.
Uh, could you describe for the board, um, how the stormwater management system was, I know you did start on that at the last hearing, but can you describe how it's going to work? And whether it complies with the stormwater management regulations and the township ordinance?
Sure. Again, just refer to A five. You can see there are two detention basins proposed. There's one in the, uh, what's the bottom left portion of the site and one up by, up by Burke Road. Uh, there is a drainage divide in the middle of the site. That's why it's necessary to have two detention basins. Uh, but they, they will satisfy all current, uh, design requirements. Uh, they will be owned by an HOA. So there'll be no, uh, no maintenance responsibilities uh, of the municipality. They will be dry. Yes.
And, um, in terms of NJDEP permitting, uh, what, what was the status of the permit and what type of permit would be required?
I don't believe there's any, uh, DEP permits required for this, uh, for this, this application.
And were wetlands identified in any location?
Uh, yes, wetland, there are wetlands on the property, but there is no, uh, no disturbance proposed to the wetlands or any wetlands buffers. So there, there are no regulated activities, uh, being proposed. So no DEP permits are, are necessary.
Okay, um, the, uh, the other question is signage or is any signage being proposed?
Just, uh, street signage.
Um, we are asking for relief for the sidewalk because we're eliminating the sidewalk in order to accommodate that neighbor's request. Is that correct?
That's correct for, for part of the entrance road for, it's a distance of about eight hundred and thirty feet.
But there is sidewalk on the other side of that. But there is sidewalk on the other side of that street?
Correct. So I believe the sidewalk just on the south side will provide for adequate pedestrian circulation and pedestrian safety.
And then.
That portion, would you be, you're going to, um, submit to the pedestrian safety part?
I, I don't think we would have a choice. I believe the ordinance requires the applicant to, uh, to make that contribution.
The, um, uh, street lighting, is that would be normal street lighting that would be required throughout the town?
Yes, JCPN L fixtures in accordance with township, uh, lighting requirements.
Um, and landscaping, you described, you, you already described what's being proposed in the buffer areas.
Yes.
In terms of, uh, professional reports, there are various technical comments contained within the reports. Are you, uh, if as a condition of approval, would you agree to address those conditions to the satisfaction of those professionals?
Yes.
Um, and would, and, and I guess we should cover, even though bulk variances are typically subsumed into the density variance, but we should discuss the variance. It's just so the board understands the relief that was granted previously and would be carried over into this application.
Yes. Well, the, um, the density variance, um, my understanding of it is, um, gave us approval to develop the lots in accordance with the R1 zoning standards. Those R1 standards, uh, has, uh, specific requirements for depth with setback and, and other, uh, you know, regulated standards. There are two lots that do not meet those, uh, those standards, uh, which we had testified to previously. One is lot 40.01, which is a lot depth variance being, being sought, uh, where we have about 164 feet and 200 feet is required. Lot 40.01 is this first lot, uh, that first lot at the entrance to the, uh, to the subdivision. And the main reason why that variance is, is requested is because this road has been kicked over so far to provide that significant buffer to address the, uh, the adjoining neighbors' concerns. Yes. Four feet high fences. Yes. Chain link fence. Yes. Uh, and, uh, Anthony, can you go back to A four, please?
There was a comment, wasn't there? Somebody, well.
I, I'm pretty sure that this, uh, was reconfigured a little bit from the previous design. Correct. So we did reshape that somewhat to try to get it away from the house as much as possible and keep, you know, as much usable yard space as we could. Right. Well, she wanted some, uh, some landscaping in here as well.
Yeah. Can we make sure the mic is on?
Yeah, I believe that, um, she wanted some, some, uh, buffering and landscaping in there. And again, if you look at, uh, the plan here, it does, it does show, um,
Yes.
Conservation easement being kept here. And, you know, frankly, we can, we can add some more landscaping around the bottom portion of that basin as well to, uh, to further address that, uh, that comment.
As far as on the, on the entrance side, where you removed the sidewalk for that buffer, what kind of trees are you planning on planting there? Are you going to have a greens? Yeah, I don't see a, a tree, like a specific plant.
Well, there's a, um, again, we have, we have street trees along, basically along the curb line.
Right.
Then behind the street trees, we have a mixture of, uh, some evergreen, some evergreen trees and some shrubs to provide what we like to call a, uh, four season buffer.
Okay.
That will give different, some differing, you know, some variation of colors and textures. As opposed to just planting a, what I call the industrial look where you take one species and put them along the property line. Uh, so I think this is a big upgrade over that, over that concept. The other variance, just, just to touch on, is this lot line at lot, uh, it's lot 40, lot 40.10 is this proposed lot in the cul-de-sac. And when we drew this, this lot line extending from the cul-de-sac to the existing property line, we continued that, that straight down. Cause I, I felt that that made more sense just to have that property line straight down. That results in a lot width variance, uh, because of that, that peculiar condition. I mean, we could address that if, if this lot line were radial and kicked over to that, you know, to that side by about 20 or 30 feet, that lot would conform. But I think this is a better planning alternative. Just having that lot line extend from the existing lot line at the perimeter boundary. So technically that's a, that's a variance. This lot has a variance for, uh, for lot width. The, uh, that lot has a width of 135 feet as proposed where 150 feet is required.
Right.
So those are the only two, uh, bulk variants that were, were identified as we worked through and repaired these detailed subdivision plans.
And just following back up on the signage, there is no site identification sign, just, uh, just street signs essentially, right?
Correct. There is no development sign proposed at this time.
Okay. And it's your opinion that this plan conforms to the conditions that were contained within the, the, uh, density variance that was granted in 2020?
Yes.
And I think that's all the testimony we have, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think, I think from, uh, the revised, the, the revised plans are, um, substantially conform with the comments that we've received from the public to date. So that's good. And in addition to incorporating the board's comments and even some of the professional comments over the time. For the newer board members, a real quick brief summary here. Stormwater management system has been designed to be consistent with NJDEP and township ordinance requirements for stormwater management. What that means is they are reducing the amount of stormwater runoff that they are discharging because they're managing it on site through infiltration and also through controlled release. So they do meet the reduction factors required for the two 10 and 100 year storms. The onsite sanitary sewer is being, uh, treated with onsite septic systems. And also they're, they're proposing public potable water wells to service each dwelling also. The vegetation that they're proposing to plant within the buffer, the supplemental evergreen trees, uh, they are, they are deer resistant. So that's good. Deer, deer are in it. Deer are, uh, deer are in this area. So, um, they are ever, they are deer resistant. The basins are protected through four foot high post and rail or chain link fence with mesh. The overall rating design for the lots and the subdivision is consistent with ordinance requirements and does, does not adversely impact any of the adjacent property owners. From a roadway design standpoint, the roadway is designed to meet RSIS and township requirements. It's a 30 foot wide cartway, which permits, which would permit parking on either side. However, the applicants indicated that for a five bedroom home, which is the maximum to anticipate within the subdivision, that they have provided ample parking onsite so that they may not re, so they're not forced to park in the roadways themselves. Curbing and sidewalk proposed along the internal roadways, with the exception of where the conservation easement is behind the residence on Cobain. I'm sorry, behind the residences on Solomon. And also along Burke Road. Now, the one question I have for the applicant is how far along are you in your discussions with the county as far as the road improvements here?
We've made application and the county has given us a conditional approval.
Okay.
So what, what you see on this, this plan is what's going to be required.
Okay. Just be aware, I believe Burke Road is, Burke Road is scheduled to be repaved and also some other miscellaneous drainage improvements by the county in 20, I think early to mid 2023. So just from a, from a potential moratorium perspective, just be careful of that. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, the revised landscaping and buffer plan in accordance with the comments from the public is acceptable and follows the general guidelines of land development ordinance. I'm not sure if we heard testimony, so I'll just ask the applicant's attorney or engineer. We are limiting the house sizes to five bedrooms.
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you. Two car garage. Minimum two car garage.
Through the chair, I made a quick note here early on and am I correct when I heard these homes are going to be built for friends and family?
Well, that's what the applicant says, but that's, uh, tomorrow they could decide to sell it to developers. It's, it's, we, the approvals with the land, not with who's going to live there.
Well, I understand that. I just made that note. So I'm going to, that's, that's not enforceable by any means. All right. And um, you're going to comply with the look-alike ordinance, correct?
We will comply with, yes, of course.
All right. Thank you.
The only question I have is on the lighting, the street lighting along Seaver Court. What side of the, how many, what's the spacing for the street lighting? And where are they being placed on north or south side of Seaver Court? I'm only concerned about the length of the road that goes up to the existing homes.
Well, uh, the answer to the question is that they're located on, uh, on both sides. They, they generally alternate. The lighting plan is included in the plan set, but, uh, the first two, the first two lights are going to be on the north side. And then they're going to, um, first, no, the first three lights are going to be on the north side here. So the first three lights will be on the north side, which gets us to, uh, the third lot on Solomon Court, so right about here. So the first three lights will be on this north side. So the lights will be facing, uh, facing away from Solomon Court. So we tried to minimize the impact as much as possible. Then from that point, the lights basically alternate from one side, one side to the other, to get the best coverage, most efficient coverage that we can.
So when you say facing away, the light will be reflected onto the road. Correct?
Correct.
So placing those lights on the southern side wouldn't make any sense.
Uh, I, I believe that would, that would be more impactful to the adjoining property owners.
Why would that be?
Well, cause then, then the, the light would be pointed more, the light would be pointed more towards the north as opposed to be pointed a little more towards the south.
Right. So if you put it on the south side, it'd be facing the street, which would have more of an impact on the property owners that exist.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, septic, septic and well, septic and well. There's no water or sewer available here.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I'll go back to, uh, public.
I know, but before you didn't ask my neighbor.
Well, just raise your right hand again. You, you've been previously sworn.
No, not today. So everything I said before didn't.
I thought you were when you came up to.
No, I just, no, I raised my hand. You said, start talking.
I would have, I didn't. I'll do it again. You saw, sir, you raised your hand. Sadly swear affirm testimony information, questions or comments you've got to present before the board represent the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Does this mean that anything I said earlier is not on the official record?
Uh, no, it does not. You, you're confirming that what you said was true.
Got it.
And you've been previously sworn on this application.
Oh, yeah. Oh, please.
Just your name.
P R I I T. Last name is Pals, P A L S.
Thank you, sir.
Block 3601, lot 38. That's hearsay. You can't tell me what they said.
No, what you said.
Well, I, my impression from these gentlemen, that they're upstanding. They're very easy to get along with and, and the proof in the pudding is there's things on here. I know they listened to me because there's things on here that I didn't, they asked me for an email of what the concerns were. There's things on there that weren't in my email, but we had discussed them in our office and they did it. So for, for example, like in these things, there's a landlocked, my understanding, there's a landlocked lot over there next to, uh, Mordecai Fowler's lot, which is onward where you guys are showing, uh, where you guys are showing that little easement right there, right? That half acre lot right there is landlocked. It's owned by the same person, but that doesn't mean that it'll ever be sold. In previous meetings, there was talks and even in these review letters that we need, that needs to be talked about. You have to provide access to that. Now, listen, it's not my yard. I'm just, I'm just bringing that up that this is something that I'm not seeing, but there was something that was spoken about. So let's go to the landscaping thing, because that's, that's my, you know, that's my big concern. Yeah, that's absolutely true because that was when the 30 foot, the original road, the original design of the one street had the road 30 feet off of our property. And I testified and I, I, I spent a lot of money on color photographs, the whole nine yards. And I presented how our property is at a disadvantage, for lack of a better term, because our elevation is about four, five, six feet lower than the applicants, because we live in a pit. And on the edge where the two properties come together is where it's eroding quickly because it was a gravel pit. The soil is made out of stone, et cetera. Now, you know, we were, I talked to Sal earlier and he was like, you know, you're, you're, you're the biggest fighter against something that you like. But my original thing was I didn't think it was proceeding legally. However, what they are doing, if, can we go, Tony, is it the, the four, where the, where the, um,
A five, A five.
The landscape, that's it, right? When I spoke with the, um, owners, it was my impression that, and again, they're not builders. And 50 feet behind your house isn't going to be touched. It, he, they're not builders. It's unrealistic. There's a road going in there. There's going to be grading that needs to be done, et cetera. But now I have a serious concern as, as relates to the conditions in my yard, in our yard, with the topography. They're, they're saying, well, the, the applicant is, is proposing a 20 foot clearing. Or we're going to retain anything from 20 feet. So where we are right there, that area, the woods really starts. Can you go to the general development plan? Cause that might show. And now there's certain things, I did this kind of stuff for the majority of my career, looking at plans like this. So when, when I, I don't know, some people might think I'm nuts, uh, because for instance, you see that? Uh, the general, the general plan. That's all you have? That wouldn't, what do, A, A, A two? You have A two, you only have A four and five now. And then what, which would be the general side?
Well, A, A four is the, uh, development plan, which is what he has up on the screen, most current one.
Um, it, it shows, first of all, one, one pet peeve I have is that the dark squiggly line is the extent of clearing. The light squiggly line is the existing tree line. Well, the light squiggly line doesn't end up in the key. So you really can't tell what it is. But nonetheless, we are located in the area, if you looked, if we had the aerial photograph, where the, there's less woods. It's a field. It's a field and down towards Burke, because they have to meet Burke Road level, it's all open field. And I commend, and I even told him, it's impressive. I was out there today looking and it's like, wow, they must've really looked to see what might work best to protect someone's pool or to protect this or that. The 20 foot clearing is of great concern to me because I was just out there today and at, at 25 feet off of our property line, there is a 28 to 30 inch diameter oak tree. And if they're talking about clearing everything 20, that large tree being so close to where our property drops off by six feet with machinery rumbling is, it, yeah, that concerns me. And when I had discussions, my understanding was, was that the grading isn't, I thought that the, the necessity of grading the road is what was punching into that 50 feet. Cause these two houses have way more woods behind them. 36 and 37 have way more woods. And then as you get closer to the road, it opens up to the field. So standing there, when I'm at 20 feet, I'm telling you, 28 inch, 30 inch, 24 inch, there are some massive trees there and I can't speak for the neighbors, but there's a nice line of trees that are beyond 20 feet. So today, and I was speaking with these gentlemen, and I'm going to reach out to my future neighbors and find out if, if in fact the grading isn't that crazy or crucial, at least, you know, give us 30, if we got 34, 35 feet, we would be maintaining all of the existing trees behind us at only 15 feet more. And as you go down to the west, there would be maybe one tree that somebody would lose. Now, as you get further in there. There would be maybe one tree that somebody would lose. Now, as you get further in there, if you've got to remove trees and grade the land. We're not unreasonable people. There's going to be conditions that you're going to have to deal with, you know, just because, oh, we'd like to have this or whatever.
So could we respond to that one?
Sure.
Uh, cause we, we understand. So Graham, what's the process that we fought, you follow on every project?
Right, so there is a procedure in, in this particular town for, for that issue. The first thing we do when we're going to build the jobs, we have to stake out the limit of clearing and the contractor has to put up fencing. Then the, um, the township's, uh, forester comes out and they look at that. Uh, fencing, that limit of clearing, and then if there are trees that can be saved that are close to that. Tree lot, then close to that limit of clearing or fence, they would be saved. So there is a procedure to do that in this particular municipality.
Understood.
Graham, could you, would you, would you be amenable to adding a note to the plan that? The applicant will work with the for township forester prior to clearing any specimen trees within this buffer area?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Sure. And then the landscape plan would be adjusted accordingly if there are, uh, several trees that could be saved.
Now, if I may continue talking about more landscaping, I'm looking at the latest R V E report dated, uh, October eleventh. And on page seven, landscaping E, number five. The tree protection detail on shoot thirteen should show that tree fencing is set one foot away from the trunk for each. Inch of caliper. So a twenty inch caliber tree is going to require a fence twenty feet away. So now what I'm scared about is my big thirty inch tree is going to require a fence thirty feet away and it's going to be sorry Charlie, because that's in the middle of the road. And this is what it says. Uh, then help me understand what E.
So a tree, what the purpose of a tree protection fences is to protect the tree, not, not to clear the tree. So that if, if it's a ten, if it's a twenty inch diameter tree. You're putting a fence around it twenty feet, because that's the drip line, right? So that's to protect the tree, not to clear the tree.
No, I understand.
Protect an individual tree.
Help me understand this. So there's a tree that's twenty inches in diameter and you have to keep a fence. Twenty feet, twenty, twenty inches, twenty feet away. So if the twenty foot direction. Here is going to interfere with some kind of work. Twenty feet's a pretty long distance, you know what I'm saying? That's what confused me.
Understood.
My, 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 my concern is, and listen, I looked, I looked at those hollies that are, are, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy and I'm really impressed. Um, that, that they're doing this. The other thing was, if you go back to the landscape plan. In, in here, they're putting in, uh, 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 nitrate septic systems, you know, advanced nitrate septic systems. And in the R V E reports, it said, it has said that, you got the landscaper? Oh, sure, I'm sorry. It, um, it says that in order to protect the septic fields. No trees can be planted any closer than fifty feet. And then you have an ordinance in town that says no trees can be planted any closer than twenty-five or fifteen feet to a driveway, to a street light. So I don't know, you look, you look at those right there on, on the south side, on the bottom side, because there's no, there's no, um. Septics, you know, be behind us. But all of those septics there, look, that tree, that tree. Some of these houses, if they're held to this fifty feet, because the protection is of the septic bed. Because you don't want the trees being too close to destroy the septic bed. And it, uh. The applicant proposes to install a septic field within the front yard. Um, tree should be planted a minimum fifty feet from the field. Either septic field should be relocated or the applicant reduces the number of shade trees and requests a waiver. Testimony shall be provided to discuss these options. I'm sorry. Testimony will be, uh, provided to discuss these options. Because the fifty feet from the septic field, so they're either gonna, they're here in this report, our report. Either the septic fields should be relocated or the applicant, uh, shall reduce the number of shade trees or request a waiver. Yeah, now, uh, how do you, how do you reconcile that with this kind of?
We, we believe that that section of ordinance is not applicable and that we have to comply with whatever the board of health requires.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, of course, of course. Uh, there's, you know, there's other thing.
Well, now that it's brought up, we may as well. We didn't want, we didn't want to engage in any long debate on that point, so, um. Go ahead, Graham, you want?
Well, I, I don't believe there's any, any regulation that requires, uh, trees to be fifty feet from the septic field. Uh, of course, any design we do would be, uh, in accordance with OSHA County Health Department and, and state regulations for the septic system.
So where, where the ordinance for town says that anything else requested by the board is going to be dealt with, that doesn't mean anything then, because if they're saying it again in a letter. I understand if it's, it's not legal, it's not legal, you don't do it. When I was, I spent three hours at the office this week. I asked, has a submitted traffic analysis been put in? No, there's been none. It says here that the traffic report needs to be updated. Um, I had, I had also written in one of my, I, I don't know if you guys look at them, probably laughed, they're missives. Fifteen pages long because of my training of the job that I did. Um, my, I'm sleep deprived, so my memory is shot. This is not good. Oh, I, I, I apologize. I was up all night long working on this stuff.
Imagine if he was against this application, what would happen?
Well, and again, um, we're, you know what, we're not against this application at all. It's good, right, and it's going to improve, it's going to increase the value of our homes. The, the thing that I find very odd is, is that the original application for the variants. Was presented with the environmental guy and the traffic guy and the whole thing holistically was presented to us. Now they got the variants, the first meeting, the first time that this would have seen the light of day in front of the public. The board was ready to vote on it on June first, until it was, oh, yeah, no doubt. It was like at, at three hours and fifty-eight minutes, thirty-eight minutes and fifty seconds, Mr. Gertner, you said, the next time we get together is going to solely be for deliberation and voting. And that plan had never seen the light of day. There was never any kind of testimony on environmental, on traffic, whatever. We had reports from our township that said, one said, we're not looking at the traffic report, because there's three less cars, so it can't increase. But the other guy's saying, well, you've moved the road further north or south and now your line of sight changes. Your offsets change, all these things from R S I S change, and there is no updated. But one thing that I really like this, now I, now I recall, when this project was being pitched. It was stated that there were illegal, unpermitted garages operating on that property. And by approving this, we would be eliminating that. Well, my contention is, is that unpermitted, unlicensed garages aren't going to dispose of their waste materials in a permitted legal manner. Cause if they were so law-abiding, they would be registered garages. So in this instance, we are on well water. We don't know what was going on there. It was an unpermitted garage. I would expect to see soils and groundwater samples being taken to, to determine if there's the presence of any petroleum hydrocarbons or other hazardous substances in the water. From an illegal operation, not, you know, not.
Ultimately, that, that's not the municipalities', uh, concern. They're going to have to do their tests. They own the property. They took it at their own risk. Presumably, they bought it with what they call at least a phase one, if not a phase two. The, to ensure those changes. If it turns out when they put the wells in as an example, that. There's some level of contamination, if they didn't get a hold harmless from the previous owners or the like. They're going to have to at that point clean it up through the outside agency. I would also say the chairman asked me, I, and, and I think, given. You, where your testimony's been going, generally speaking, while this board, more than others that I've been involved with, quite frankly. Gives great latitude to, to the public, um, you, uh, to make points, generally, there's a. You have five to ten minutes to, to raise the concerns. Certainly, if you're cross-examining a witness, that would be one thing. But I, I think Mr. Chairman asked me if you could get to the highlights of what you want addressed. So that there can be some focus.
This is where, this is where it's falling apart for me. I could, I maintain, and I'll go to my grave saying that this was not presented in its totality in front of us. The whole nine yards like the other one was. So now I feel as if I have to scramble. I'm all for this. But when I see that they're going to clear up the twenty feet. And I look and I see these trees are going to be coming down behind us and it's so close to where it drops off. Those are big concerns of mine. And I'm thinking, wow, what chance do I have to express this? Because we're getting ready to vote here tonight.
That and, and there's a condition on the plan itself, the highlight for the, they've agreed for the municipal forester. To look for these species of trees.
Yeah, no, yeah, listen, I understand. I'll, I'll, these, these guys are, my concern is, you, you're stamping today. Technically, if these, they have to come back with a site plan anyway, right? But if, no, then these, these are the drawings they're going to work with. And if it says twenty feet, it'll be twenty feet too bad. One, one last thing, one last thing, and I beg that you ask me this. What is the legal ramification of a resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-nine? Granting a D five variance for residential lots. Whereas the applicant five oh eight has applied for variance approval for blocks, blah, 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 right? They're only looking for the var, uh, the zoning variance at the time. Well, at the end of this document, where it says now therefore be it resolved the seventh day of October. That the applicant's request for major subdivision approval with design waivers is now hereby approved.
That's a type, that's a typo.
That's the legal document.
Right, it's a typo in the resolution.
So the, uh, that's why I'm asking, does that, does that mean anything? It doesn't mean anything.
Since that wasn't the head header nor the understanding of any, anyone, it was a typo in the resolution. And thank you for pointing it out, because we'll correct that typo in this one.
See now, I was, I was afraid of bringing this up, because if this kills the whole nine yards, we get to start all over. I don't know what you, you people, you need to base it on the law, like you said, you're bound by the law, et cetera. I would, we are willing to work with these guys. One, one thing that I did relay to them when I spoke with them and I sent them an email. And there was talk about those, what you had spoken about those pushes under here. It was in my email, so they, they. They dealt with some, but they didn't deal with others, just like they didn't show my, the one house here, or they didn't show the house there that touches the property. Where it says here that you have to li, list them and then the report was saying you might have to make a bigger thing to show all of them. That's all. I am, I am elated that we're at this point and these guys would work with us. But that is, that is a major, major consideration. I tried to get them to come visit and take a look, you know, with me on the property. Yeah, well, no, not the new owners. You saw them, but the new owners haven't, you know. I brought all kinds of stuff. Believe me, I brought all kinds of stuff, so. Well, look how I'm shaking already for two days. If, if we could, if we could discuss with them, because again, I can't do hearsay. But there is a concern for everybody that's been living there. My thing is, it's, it is, uh, it's a field. And if one thing I could ask, they're showing Leland Spryce's, Leland Cypress's, six to eight feet tall. The people that would benefit the most from the six to eight foot tall are the people that are closest to Burke Road, because their yards are flat like the road is. They've got nothing. And you see what I'm saying? So the taller one, the bigger ones you give them, they're already saying six to eight feet. And, uh. One last thing, if you look at the landscape, if you look at the landscape plan, the designation for the Leland Cypress's is capital C, lowercase I. However, the planting schedule has no such designation. It says C L, and I know it's all, it's no big deal, but these are engineers. Specificity is an engineer's thing, so technically, there's no such plant. Called Leland Spryce Cypress being shown on there, if you look at what's on the plant and what's on the table. You know, it's things, and, and again, this is because of my training. I've been ruined by the state. I thank you for your time. I really appreciate it and. Pardon me? Hopefully they don't get I G D. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Well, well, before you do that, there's no other members of the public.
Yes, the only, uh, two variances I believe are necessary is a lot width for lot forty point ten. And lot depth for lot forty point zero one. Forty point zero one.
Those are the specific variances. Understand that all these lots do not conform to the, the current zone. But that was the basis of the density variance that we received. Those are the. Uh, we've spent enough time, I know it's very late. We'd appreciate if the board approves the application. We, uh, as you can see, we've. My client has done so much to try and address the neighbors' concern. I'm not sure if a yes will ever be received and by, by the gentleman, but. They, they've, they've indicated again to me today, they'll continue to work with any of the neighbors. They are going to be neighbors and, um. We've addressed all the technical comments and again, we'd request that the board grant the approval, subject to all the conditions that we've stipulated. And compliance with professional reports. Just to the limit of, um, I guess the property lines, basically, right?
Yeah, the side, think of it this way, they're putting sidewalks along both sides of the road around the entire development. With the exception of the area immediately behind the homes on Solomon Court, where they ask for it to be more natural.
And we're going to pay, and Lou will pay the fund for that stretch of sidewalk that we're not putting in. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, I'd like to echo what my chair Bradley just said. Um, I sat through the last one where you had lots of comments. Um, one of the comments I remember was the, the mom concerned about the pool in the backyard and. People walking along the sidewalk and seeing into her teenage daughters, uh. As a father of teenage girls, I can appreciate that. Um, but this is, in my opinion, this is responsible development. Um, these are, you know, good sized lots, look-alike homes, um, you listened. Um, you went above and beyond, in my opinion, um, to hear what the neighbors had to say and actually listen to them. And make those adjustments. So I personally am looking forward to approving this application.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that it's, it's, um, heartwarming to have a, uh. Cooperative developer, uh, that's listened to the concerns of the neighbors and then actually has addressed that. The variances that are being sought here are C variants or both variances. Uh, I think the, uh, applicant has met its burden, uh, relative to a C two variance in this regard. It is providing housing, which is a benefit to the, the general welfare, considering that housing or residential development. Is consistent with our, uh, ordinances and, and, and master plan. Albeit varying from density, but a, a density grant, uh, variance has been, has been granted. As far as the variances that are sought for lot, um. Twenty, forty point ten, uh, I accept the testimony of, of the, the engineer in this regard. And the testimony of, of our own expert engineers, planner, that this provides a better, uh, planning alternative. By providing for that lot, regular lot lines as opposed to irregular lot lines. And they explain the purposes of, uh, setting a line in such a straight fashion. That I think I agree with them, that is a better, uh, better plan. As far as the variance relative to lot forty point zero one, which is a lot depth variance. And, um, the, the basis for the variance that is sought. Uh, is that there's a conservation area that's, that's behind that lot. That is going to be necessary to, to maintain in order to pre, pr, provide the lot. With the necessary area to provide for the catch basin and the conservation area that. The size of a lot is, was necessitated as a result. I don't think it's a hardship. I think it's a benefit in that regard. So as far as the, uh, positive and negative criteria, criteria are concerned. The homes are going to be consistent with the general development of the area. It is permitted, uh, residential development is permitted, uh, with our ordinances and zone plan. It's consistent with the general basis of the master plan. Well, based on those, uh, reasons. Like, as far as I'm concerned, I think a, uh, the applicant who met its burden for a C two variance. Well, based on those, uh, reasons, I, as far as I'm concerned, I think a, a, uh, the applicant who met its burden for a C two variance. I'll move to approve the, um, subdivision application has been granted as a preliminary and final subdivision application. Uh, with the variants that were requested for lots forty point zero one. And for the reasons I stated in lot forty point ten, for those purposes, that the very, the C two variance be granted in that regard. Yes.
Yes.
Bradley.
Mr. Nigerian.
Thank you, everyone.